City owes them for sales taxes that they just haven't transferred the funds. So, in essence, their cash position is going to be nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to go into next year.
Hadn't the check been done?
Well, it wasn't in September, so it should be in October.
Okay, so just as a show of...
Counselor. Quick question now that we're talking about that. What's come up several times is reference to our zip coding and sales tax and all these things. Do you think that we could ask Economic 4B to either go to the Secretary of State's office or do a kind of an analysis to make sure we're getting all our sales tax based upon the addresses that not only from the Secretary of State's records? So, I'm pretty sure we get a general number monthly. But I'm just talking about either getting someone to do a special project that we could like, look at funds from like, look at the accounts for Flowkim for like twelve months, look at the gas station for twelve months, and then maybe look at the campus bistro. And because those addresses aren't in Prairie View, we want to study...
I can look at that.
Okay, okay. Well, those are the types of things that we want with.
What I'll do is I'll canvass the state to see if I can get the detail behind the summer numbers.
Ms. Johnson, were you able to open up what the state sent us?
Uh, no, but she's sending a hard copy this week.
Okay, because we requested, because, I don't know, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, they've, you know, say it's an ongoing issue and concern. But all the things that I've checked and we just requested a more recent updated list. Keep in mind, everything west of University Drive, listed in Hempstead and East is listed in Waller. So, if that's the case, we wouldn't have any sales tax coming in based on the way it's quote-unquote listed, just behind the zip code problem. But we worked double-checking that and with whatever you can.
Yeah, we're double-checking, Johnson.
Doesn't Flowkim have all the addresses?
Sure.
Yeah, but there are, when you look at the property tax rolls, they're all in the city of Prairie. Flowkim, they list all the major property taxpayers, so the sales tax, you file a property tax.
Yeah, they're the top five in the city.
So, yeah, everyone knows interest.
Okay, thank you.
And I have that.
Then municipal court, you got judges' report? Any questions for your honor? Anything else you want to show these judges?
Uh, not particularly there, but you'll take a look at your report on page that's labeled, page two point three. If you remember during the motion process, how you asked me to change that pie chart? So, now you can see how some of the numbers are being reflected on that pie chart? All right, so if you have any other questions?
Um, I've got one. The new cases filed during the month, where are those one hundred and two coming from?
Um, some of them are coming...
A lot from campus and...
Right, yes, sir. Some of those cases are coming from the campus. A majority of them are from campus. Some of them from the city public park. And I think in October, there were nine code ordinance violations. But if you take a look at page three of three and look down at that chart that says cases filed by agency, you can see the distribution of the cases.
Do we keep count how many tickets or what activity from homecoming? Because I was, yeah, I was the, so several people have come, like, who don't live in Prairie, right? And about the parking, towing of cars and those types of things? And I wanted to just, is that the chief? Okay.
But you did ask me last year, I think in each year, you've asked me to give you a report of the cases that were filed during the homecoming period. I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you. Just because I think we also have to do, we can, by giving this information, we can do a better job of communicating with people before they come in the city, because things have changed, and so we want them to be mindful of tickets, citations, and changes.
And, and, and awareness, though. Chief Solomon didn't have that information posted to our website prior to homecoming.
Judge, a question on that Pine Island situation with Mr. Johnson. Is his listed in code enforcement? Because that's what got him in here, and I think he's on a paying the plan.
Yes, sir, there.
So, it shows in here?
Yes, sir, there. As a matter of fact, all of that seven point seven eight percent, nine hundred of those dollars are collection cases, and they are his. And then four hundred of those current dollars are from code enforcement that was collected from the same...
Okay, so that is the twelve or something thirteen hundred dollar, okay. Great, thank you, ma'am. Great, great report. Appreciate the breakdown.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, police report?
I don't really have anything. She had some questions on those towed. Count.
We don't, we don't, the thing about, we don't write citations when we tow vehicles for homecoming, right? So, that would, it wouldn't be reflected.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have any citations related to homecoming anyway. What we did was, we kept track of all the vehicles we towed, and those vehicles, we don't make any money on those vehicles. We just, we just keep it real clear. Now, any citations that were written, maybe were written over the campus for parking.
The question, the reason why I ask that is, do you think we're towing people and should we be giving citations if, if, in place of a tow? If they're not in a emergency spot, or if they're not in the spot, I guess you get what I'm saying? Like, like, they're not blocking anything. Can we write a ticket? And, and that, that citation kind of goes into the city versus towing fifty people? And we have, we get the headaches of people saying, oh, I came to Prairie, you got a tow. We didn't receive any money from it, but the headache of fifty bad PR. And I, and I don't know if that's a, you know, I'm not trying to balance that we, you know, that, but I, I don't know, so I'm asking.
I think the, I think the issue is, is for one, how do you identify, like you said, listed apartment, how do you identify? I think the reason why we put that, put that policy in place, the first is because you feel like parking on that entire strip was a problem for the emergency. So, saying, well, if you park on this side of the, of the loop and that, you know, I feel like we're going to put ourselves in a slippery slope. We have to start trying to, like, quote-unquote, identify. But then, you know, you know how people are, if you give a little bit of leeway, it's going to turn into, you know, a mile of leeway. So, I feel like we gave them the, and unfortunately, it rained the whole week. So, we don't control the weather, but I, I think we have to be consistent when it comes to that aspect, just because it will eliminate any partiality, you know what I'm saying? Because we're saying, hey, if you park anywhere in this, you're going to be towed. Now, I feel like, I feel like it was communicated adequately for people, and, you know, and people got so excited about the turnout, they disregarded it, but, you know, there's signs in place. I think people were going to complain even when there was a citation or...
But our real issue is, is have we continued to alleviate the main problem, which was parking? Like, just to say, because, because again, if we just putting Band-Aids and the problem is actually parking, and you say, hey, you didn't have to park here, but they were like...
There's not really our issue to alleviate parking, but they're not...
We've given, we've given as much leeway, because we let those people park on that easement instead of the shoulder, and we did that because of safety. Even if you get on that street and you've got cars parked over down the shoulder, you've got people coming through each one of those cars, and then you've got cars coming, which gives you no time to see someone coming between those cars. And to your question, what we did, if you, if we were about to tow your vehicle and you came out, then we would give you a citation or either just have you move your vehicle. In most cases, we just had people move their vehicle.
So, chief, then...
Those are not the people you hear from.
So, you do get an opportunity due to citation?
Yes.
Which is what your question was, I believe.
Yes.
So, why, why are we not giving citations?
Well, first of all, I, I can't tell policemen to write citations. They have discretion to do what they want to do at that particular time. And in most cases, they just said, okay, we wouldn't move your car, wouldn't move your car. Now, if you've got somebody that's doing some other stuff, then I'll write a citation.
No, I mean, I mean, like, for the, for the towable cars, they're parked illegally or we can't tow them, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, why can't we write that ticket and if need be, still tow?
No, no, absolutely not. The issue, we're not going to do.
The issue is if you want the car, we don't have cars there. So, you know, writing a citation doesn't alleviate the cars being there. So, we, so we tow the cars because the issue is, you know, this isn't, this isn't a money, a money generating endeavor. We don't, we're not trying to make money off on writing citations. We're just trying to keep people safe. So, the issue is the cars being there, so we just move the cars, right? You know, I feel like they got to pay enough money to get the cars from being towed.
But, but it's kind of like, the reason why I ask, right? Because, because you're talking about just that main strip which we changed, but like, there's other parking in the city where there's, may not have that issue, where there's may submit issues. And so, the question was, how do you deploy, if someone's parked in front of, like, because I got a call, someone's parked in front of a resident's home, right? Because, but as long as they're not blocking their driveway, can a person be parked in the front of someone's home? That's public? I mean, so then we get that, that's public streets and that type of stuff? And so, we just want to make sure, like, there's the connection. But like, if you go in front of like NRG and you park in a meter that may not be on, or you, your meter's expired, you get a ticket, you don't necessarily get towed. But if you park in a zone that says like towway zone, and you just say, hey, I'm just gonna, you, you risk your car being towed, and I think we've been following that. I just had a quick question, just in reference to, were we doing that or what's the next step?
Yes, because those signs say, those signs say towway zone. It does say towway zone, so it's an actual towway zone.
Thanks.
Chief, are we, are we doing the, I'm looking, we've got thirty-six citations, which is basically a little over one every twenty-four hours. Am I, am I looking at that right, or are our folks just, or are our folks just aren't breaking the law anymore?
People are always, people are probably always breaking the law. And like I said before, there's a discretion on it. You know, when you go, you'll probably get a lot of citations that are written in school zone, because that's where we get a lot, a lot of complaints from, uh, the school zones. There is, there is a, there is a contact that you, you'll need to make contacts, but those contacts does not have to be citations. Again, that's left up to the discretionary of the officer and the person that they've, that they've come in contact with, so...
Okay, anything else, chief?
Great job, chief. Just tell the officers to do their work. Thank you.
We are going to be doing our first annual Shop With A Cop program. What you're doing, Shop With A Cop shop, with the cops? Yeah, what we're going to do is we're going to take, we've asked the school to send us the name of twelve to thirteen kids that may not have a good Christmas. And what we'll do is we'll partner with Walmart to, we'll take them to Walmart. This year's money will come from the money that we used on the community celebration. Some of that money, we will let them spend a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars each and just to buy themselves and gifts or their families and gifts. We'll also let them eat lunch that day, that night, so we're putting it all together. So, anybody want to volunteer anything, that's no problem. I mean, time, doesn't have to be money, time, I'll be in the contact with you about that. Okay.
Officer White said you'd make a fourth next morning. Oh, yeah, just didn't have anything additional from the last one. Counsel reports and counsel role.
Uh-huh. I do have a question for Public Works. Two questions. One, have the commercial dumpsters been put in Brookside for Public Works?
I'm not sure. I know they were making a transition. I don't know if they've made the transition yet.
Okay, did, uh, Republic Works give any type of timelines for that?
No, no, we just agreed to it, and they're getting around to it because the way the individual containers constantly overflow and it looks like a mess over there.
And second question, I know we talked last meeting about Saint Bernard Electric putting in light poles, and there was, and someone, one citizen told me that, that they marked for some lighting to be on Holly Hawk Street, but they said when they talked to Saint Bernard while they had the party, they said they were, Saint Bernard Williams for the AOK from, from you as the mayor, so they didn't update on that?
Yeah, what, they're, they're not doing light poles yet. In the first round, they're going around doing upgrades, existing old lights, they're upgrading them first, and then when they finish that, they're supposed to do the light poles.
So, they didn't put any new light poles in?
Not yet.
So, is there any time running there?
When they get around, you know, I mean, they're working this into the other things that, that they do. But they're, they're, they're supposed to be starting on it, and I sent John a text Thursday or Friday. He hadn't responded to it as yet.
To talk about...
The Saint Bernard guy.
I guess, I guess they don't have the capacity to work on both some technologies?
Evidently, yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, they, they say that they're waiting on your AOK to move forward. That's what, when the citizens contacted them, they said they're waiting, they said they were ready, they were just waiting on your AOK to move forward. That's all articulated to me, so...
People make mistakes before. They got to go ahead. They're doing the, you know, I mean, you, you know, what somebody tells you doesn't mean it's correct, but, but as I stated, they're, they're, they, they, they shared with me, they're doing the upgrades first, and then they're going back around and doing the other stuff. What somebody in the office tells, a customer that calls...
I saw Matthew for reassurance, uh, what?
You got him. They're getting around to it. Councilman Jones?
Also, I was out with Chief Jensen in Perry Hills, and they say for heavy trash pickup, there are only four items are picked up rather than the four load, so that's one that we can look into.
That was me, you were there.
You said chief.
I mean, I'm so sorry, Chief Solomon. Chief Solomon.
So, what, but, so that's, that's a, I would say that if we talk to Republic, heavy trash pickout is something that the citizen would have to call, and there, there was never a number, it was just, you just had to call them to kind of set up an appointment. So, is that different, is that different than us, than you putting out those four items during the regular, like...
No, they, they have parameters about what they'll pick up and how they'll pick it up. I'm saying it's like, four items of X amount of size, I don't know the specifics, four items of X amount of size, if it's like, like strawberry ass or like bone or something, like, they have...
Kind of tied up a little bit.
Yeah, they have like parameters of what, so how they're picking it up, but I've never, I've never heard of them, like, leaving stuff if you had more out there. I've, I've, I've never heard of that.
Me either. But the phone number, the phone number for that is in the newsletter, residents and us. And it's on the website.
Senior by a parking complex?
If you have a particular customer complaint, you're welcome to either give it to them the call or...
If we can get the logistics team, they can send us something.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You done?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
So, there's a, there's a link that you can go to from the city website. It kind of, it kind of goes through, like, the requirements for him, you know, ten years.
I'll just look into that for you. I have two questions with Public Works. One, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Corey. Do you know, Mr. Mayor, where are we at with our contract? We, we looked at the emergency contract, we needed to, to move forward with getting out of this emergency contract. We've been in it for almost, I think, two years. We need to do something. He says he's, they've sent that to you, and so where are we at?
We've been in communication. He has not sent anything to me. But one of the things was, now that we have a council onboard, we're taking a look at our Public Works contractors with the license that we contract with, so I'll get that information to you, and you can help us with our publication. But keep in mind, we only recently, maybe two, three weeks ago, got the final FEMA stuff that Public Works was assisting us with, and that was a main reason for continuing with them, because all that Public Works stuff out in the field, they were very instrumental in, in assisting judge with that paperwork to FEMA, and, and we're supposed to be getting checks back and all that other stuff.
I don't want your hesitation. We're not asking to go out for a rebid. We're simply asking to change from our emergency contract for them to give us a general contract moving forward, and I think they cause it a annual lump sum contract where we do a set per month, and then we reconcile at the end of the year.
What we're talking about...
Which means, which means that FEMA, RFPs for text dot and all the other grants have nothing, have nothing to do with our current, with, with us leaving or moving out of the current contract. We just simply wanted to get out of our emergency contract, which has a premium surcharge we paid for nothing. And so, we are simply can say, hey, we want to just continue to use your work, but we should see a reduction in our base pay.
Renegotiation of the agreement.
Of the agreement. So, we don't have to, so I'm not saying we need to even go for a, a bid. We can use them. I just saying we need to get out of the emergency contract, and right now, is that time where we, since we just started to do...
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure, because we know that's in excess of fifty thousand, and our ordinance requires it to be put out for bid.
Yeah, I just need to look at...
An emergency, that you can bring somebody in regardless of the amount. But now that we're leaving, as you say, the emergency, and I agree with you, but now we've got to put it out to bid.
But it's the same firm.
Well, but that, that's the problem, too. You can't just select. They want it to be bidded based on, like you said, we want to follow our ordinances, right?
We can put it out, close it, then move forward.
But I'm saying, so, so you're saying, what, what, you're saying, we're, we currently use them, they, they not let go of us and we not let go of them. We're saying we're just renegotiating. We don't need to go for a bid for renegotiation, and that is the difference?
We, yeah, we may. It's going to depend. If they were hired on an emergency basis, which did not require you to go out for bids, and, and that emergency has since passed, and we're, yeah, I heard that, and we're looking for now to have a permanent provider, then we would need to, we would probably need to bid that. Yes, sir.
So, that's, that's what we're going to get on, so that they can post it, and, and again, once we go out there, we're free to select.
But it's going to, what is the service? I didn't catch the service.
They, they have the requisite water sewer licenses and dealing with TCQ, they do a monthly report, sell that app, and required paperwork.
It's an engineering firm, or?
No, it's Public Works.
I'll get, let me get the details on it so that I can give you a better, a better answer, because there may be other options out there. I just need to know.
Sure, we'll get, we'll get that to you.
So, that was the only thing, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Counsel reports, counsel role?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor to continue to serve. There's been so much going on, I'll just say that this election probably impacted everybody and took everybody. I'll just leave it at that. We, it's an honor to be your representative here in this local community. I'll say one, one, one thing I had. I was very disappointed that the city of Prairie View didn't have any early voting locations in the city of Prairie View, and I think that we need to do, the city of Prairie View needs to do a better job of making sure that we support the opportunity for everyone to cast their ballot, ballot in the city of Prairie View. That's all.
I have more for the next man.
I just wanted to give Miss Christina a round of applause for the work that she's doing. Several citizens have asked for a Community Watch program. I know that I know what Ryan's doing, he's out there both working on bringing that to fruition. Also, it's nice to see our Public's department out, then helping hand, and also assisting Miss Christina applying, getting this stuff going, and getting that the city of Prairie View practice one point four. Officer Garrett with Miss, Councilmember Williams bringing it to my attention, has a lot of expertise in this category and field, so I do see some up and coming things coming from Community Watch and partnerships between the police department and the city and moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Number forty this time. Good evening, everyone. Once again, it's a pleasure to serve. As Councilman Olin stated, voting definitely took a lot out of us as representatives, but I just want to say, just from a general perspective of the city, whether it is from the new economic, economic development, whether it is a bunch of hands, whether it is the citizens' volunteer board has been created, I definitely am proud of the city of moving forward the way that we have, and I just want to continue to encourage us as council, mayor, and citizens to all do our due diligence in our part, so that we can continue to move the city forward. And with that, I appreciate y'all allowing me to serve as y'all representatives.
The, the homecoming time was primarily spent riding around, including the day of the game. I did ride in the parade that morning. After that, I was on the street, missed the game, whatever, it was an incredible halftime show. But I was out there, run into Chief and others to, again, just see where our folks were parking and making sure that went as smoothly as possible, and our PD did a, a good job of keeping the streets clear. Met with some folks who are on a solar, potential solar project in, in the city, and I'll, is that, they, they had a subsequent meeting with, I believe, the county, and so there's more information comes from that. I keep counsel, counsel apprised. The one hundred thousand dollar smart city grant, our first application did not pass, but they came back with a lot of the updates and how to strengthen it. So, met with Dr. Jovi a week ago, and they are reapplying for, you know, the potential two to three million to continue to go after making us a smart city. Did a march to vote with the PBA M U students, spoke with the county judge, and we wound up getting early voting in the city and on campus. So, but that was after the students had actually filed a lawsuit, so that made that happen. And, you know, we're finding out there's some technical in-house things, but for lack of a better word, they left the entire city out, not just the campus. They left the city out, and that type of mistake just can't be overlooked and, and written off. The Department of Defense, they had a major workshop strictly on resources on the campus last week, and was asked to participate in that, and there was a lot of resources, grant money and other services that we're looking to do, particularly in collaboration with the city and the university. Those are the, some of the kinds of things that they look for. Was with Chief and a few of our officers at the funeral services for Officer Vasquez, and had planned to go to the state of Waller County luncheon, and just couldn't tear myself away from the funeral, you know? Someone died who's a part of what goes on out here that, that we actually count on, and we pay county taxes and... And the Sheriff's Department's a big part of helping, uh, along with our PDs, keeping our entire county safe. But I did find out that at the Waller County State of, State of the County, they mentioned literally everything going on and everywhere in the county with the exception of the City of Prairie View. And, uh, I'll be getting back with them on that. But I guess as Lord would have it, they kept me at the funeral because I couldn't stood there and, and listen to that. Because they talk about so many other things going on in other places where land was bought, no dirt was built and all this other stuff. We got a few things going on in here too. So, uh, that was, uh, very unfortunate. The, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar Alte Vista sewer upgrade, the work is supposed, scheduled to start on November twenty-seventh. And they'll be putting out literally the week before, uh, door handles, letting people know this work is gonna be taking place, et cetera, to put people on notice, um, with that. Yes, Councilmen Jones?
Uh, I just wanna make sure with, uh, uh, Alte Vista sewer upgrade, if I could give any help to make sure that each citizen in that community, uh, get a door handle, at least a lot of notice. I will be of assistance just so that way our citizens could be safe and informed about, uh, the project that's going on in the community.
No problem. If you send me a note, I'll be glad to put you in touch with the, uh, company that we hired this contracting. That's gonna be putting them out, so that's no problem.
I'm ill at the moment.
Okay. Uh, item twelve. Discuss, consider and take action on the approval of appointing Mayor Allen as an alternate and Councilman Roland as a representative for the Houston-Galluson area council. What's the pleasure, Councilman?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Wallace?
I move that we accept the approval of appointing Mayor Allen as an alternative and Councilman Roland as a representative for the HGAC.
So it's, it's been properly moved and seconded that council approved the appointing of Mayor Allen as an alternative, an alternate and Councilman Roland as representative for the Houston-Galluson area council, coming referred to as HGAC. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Of course.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. And Councilman Roland, I want to thank you for, uh, representing us at that last thing about a week ago. Here, here's, um, the review. Okay, information from that.
Oh, great. And, uh, I'll have a report, I don't, you send it to me.
Thank you. Uh, item thirteen. Discuss, consider and take action on extending or possibly renewing the City of Prairie View's contract with Prosperity Bank. Uh, that contract is, yeah, up for renewal. It's somewhat of a lengthy process, but we've had pretty good relationships with them. So, uh, if it'd be councils, uh, we can simply renew it and keep going.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Randall?
I move that we renew the City of Prairie View's contract with Prosperity Bank.
Second. Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded that council renew the City of Prairie View's contract with Prosperity Bank. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions? Councilman Williams?